All right. Hey, good evening, everybody. I get to do a person-only call waiting to order because I don't have any officials yet. So I'm calling the meeting to order. And Morgan, if you could do, please, a roll call.
Yes. Linda Watkins. Here. Grant Erickson.
Here.
Guillermo Brandal.
Here.
Kathleen Maher.
Here.
Shirley Ward-Mullen. Here. Kevin Skipper.
Here.
All councilors are present and accounted for.
Thank you, Morgan. Before we do the oath of office ceremony, I need Kevin and Grant and Guillermo and Linda will need to come back into the office. There was a scrivener error on the dates that we're going to rectify. So Amy will be reaching out to you tomorrow. And then we'll be giving you a new original. So to get started, Ms. Linda Watkins, if you could pull your oath of office, and I would like you to roll for lift your right hand and read it. I agree. Here you go.
Thanks.
You're very welcome. Stand up. Stand up. And then if you could raise your right hand for me. And Morgan, if you could capture this, please?
Yes.
Okay. I...
One second.
Good. Yeah. Well. I am Linda Watkins, the undersigned duly elected mayor for the city of Carlton. Do hereby solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America and the state of Oregon and the Charter and ordinances of the city of Carlton. And I will faithfully perform my duties as mayor to the best of my ability. Congratulations, Mayor Watkins. Welcome aboard. We're very proud.
Thanks.
Okay. Guillermo, if you could hold up your right hand, please, and read from your oath of office.
Okay. I'll try to show my hand here.
Yes, please.
I Guillermo Brandal, the undersigned duly elected city councillor for the city of Carlton. Do hereby solemnly swear I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States of America and the states of Oregon and the shares and ordinances of the city of Carlton. And I will faithfully perform my duties as city councillor to the best of my ability.
Thank you, councillor Brandal. Congratulations and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay, Kevin Skipper. If you hold your right hand, please, and read your oath before you.
Hi, Kevin Skipper. The undersigned duly elected city councillor for the city of Carlton. Do hereby solemnly swear I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America and the state of Oregon and the Charter and ordinances of the city of Carlton. And I will faithfully perform my duties as city councillor to the best of my ability.
Thank you, councillor Skipper. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Grant Erickson.
Yes.
You can hold up your right hand and read from your oath of office, please.
Hi, Grant Erickson. The undersigned councillor for the city of Carlton. Do hereby solemnly swear I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America and the state of Oregon and the charter and ordinances of the city of Carlton. And I will faithfully perform my duties as city councillor to the best of my abilities.
Thank you, councillor Erickson. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Congratulations, everyone.
Yeah, congratulations. With that, Mayor Watkins, you could adjourn the meeting. Okay, do we need a motion to adjourn? You would see if anybody would like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Make a motion, will you adjourn the meeting?
I'm good.
Thank you. All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi.
Meeting adjourned. All right. Mayor Watkins, yes, we're going to go into our public hearing for the urban renewal meeting. And councillors, as you're aware, you are part of the Carlton Urban Renewal Agency Board. So this meeting is separate than a normal city of Carlton meeting. And if you could call it to order. And then have Morgan perform a roll call. Okay. So I'm calling to order the meeting of the urban renewal committee. And Morgan, if you could do roll call, please.
All right, Mayor Linda Watkins.
Here.
Council President Shirley Ward-Mullen.
Here.
Councillor Grant Erickson.
Here.
Councillor Guillermo Brandal.
Here.
Councillor Kathleen Maher.
Here.
And councillor Kevin Skipper.
Here.
All councillors are present and accounted for.
So again, a little burst for approval minutes. Okay, are there any changes or additions to the minutes for the previous meeting? Hearing none.
Make a motion, will you approve the meeting minutes?
I'm good.
For the urban renewal?
Thank you, guys. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Did we get a second?
Yes.
I seconded it, Shirley.
We got everybody? Everybody voted? Any opposed? Any opposed? The meeting's stand approved as presented. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the public hearing. The urban renewal financial report. Okay, that is the first one. Okay, the urban renewal financial report for fiscal year 20? That's correct. So mayor and council, every year for ORS, we are required to do a financial accounting for the state of Oregon after this meeting. This annual report will be published in the newspaper for two consecutive times for ORS. So what this is, is for FY '20. It is a time capsule of the urban renewal. If you look at item number one, it's showing that the amount of taxes we received in FY '20 is $183,921. We do not have any debt issuance to receive revenue from, so that is a zero. And then under item two, you're looking at the materials and services, $3,677. Improvement in expenditures, which is project-related, $24,319. This FY '20 shows the first debt service payment of $65,000, which is urban renewal has an agreement with the city of Carlton. It's their portion to pay. They're paying $1 million of the loan debt for the metal lake transmission lines. And so you will see the $65,000 till it gets to the $1 million mark. Then item number three, this is an estimate of taxes that we think that we're going to receive in FY '21, and that's $184,600. You'll see that it's a smaller amount. We got in FY '20, some old debt got collected, so it's a little higher than we projected. And then we have no revenue from debt issue. And then item number four, we have budgeted for material and services, $7,500. We have total improvement budget of $310, $250. That improvement budget is mostly going to be centered around undergrounding utilities, which is outlined in the urban renewal plan. And then we also budgeted for that second payment of $65,000. Now, the interesting part for you on the back, if you're not familiar with the urban renewal, at the time that the district was created, they froze the tax value at $18,785,600. And what the money is that the city can collect is as the values got assessed. But as the property taxes increase, the city gets to gather the amounts above the frozen value until we get to our cap and our urban renewal district goes away. And we roughly have about $3,500,000 before that will ever close. That we will be spending out of this. The chart that you see below shows the impact. So when that got frozen, the monies you see for the impact over to the right, those agencies are not receiving those tax dollars. But what happens is when the urban renewal goes away, they'll recoup some of that money because their property value has continued to increase. And so when urban renewal dissipates, then they'll start receiving their revenue then. So this is the actual report that we'll be sending and publicizing in the newspaper. Do I have any questions? All right, hearing none. Do I have a vote to, or motion to approve the urban renewal district report? And forward it to the city council? Forward it to the city council?
Yeah, I move to approve the urban renewal financial report for fiscal year 2020 and move it forward to the city council.
I'll second that.
All in favor? All in favor?
Hi.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, the motion is carried. And we adjourn the urban renewal meeting and we'll reconvene back at seven. Okay, do we need a motion to adjourn the meeting? Correct. Okay, I need a motion to adjourn the urban renewal meeting?
I move that we adjourn the urban renewal meeting.
And second?
Okay. All of those in favor?
Hi.
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 Opposed? Hearing, the meeting is adjourned. And we'll reconvene back at seven. Reconvene, we'll be back here at seven.
Are unmuted.
All right. You can call the meeting to order. How do you call the meeting to order? Just say 7:00 PM, call the meeting. Okay, at 7:00 PM, the January 2021 meeting is called to order. Morgan, roll call, please.
All right, Mayor Linda Watkins.
Here.
Council President Shirley Ward-Mullen.
Here.
Councillor Grant Erickson.
Here.
Councillor Guillermo Brandal.
Here.
Councillor Kathy Maher.
I'm here.
Councillor Kevin Skipper.
Here.
All right, all councillors are present and accounted for.
Okay. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic that stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? None from staff, Mayor Watkins? Anybody else have anything they'd like to add or subtract or change? Okay. So. Ceremonies, appointments and announcements. So you'll start with the state of the city address? All right, folks, I've been practicing this all day. And I'm going to try to do it without crying. Kathy said I could do it. So this has not been done before, but Carlton citizens, I think, ought to have a general update on our city's activities and our general condition. So this is Carlton's first state of the city with a little bit of history included in this. Starting three years ago with Kathy Oriett's retirement as mayor after 16 years and accompanied by the retirement of six-year city manager Chad Olson, Carlton has been facing one major challenge after another, the selection of a new city manager. And now, three years later, another selection process for that position, another change in mayor's office, and almost complete turnover of the city council with three newly elected members. And my replacement, if we selected, will be a fourth. Fortunately, we have a long-term professional staff with the experience and confidence to fill in the gaps these changes have created. I have every confidence that they will provide the best service they can for all of us. From our administrative staff to public works to our police department, Carlton city employees have stepped up to the challenges of dealing with new city managers and elected officials, departing city managers, pandemic procedural guidelines that seem to change weekly, all while keeping our city running smoothly and helping citizens under challenging circumstances. That we've experienced few glitches in our system is to their credit. And they deserve our thanks as they try to ensure all of our needs are met. With all of our council staff and committees in place, we will be in good shape to handle whatever challenges we encounter in 2021. We don't know what changes will come with the availability of the COVID vaccine. We don't know how our businesses will come out of this whole situation, nor how each of us individually will survive. COVID-19 has become a big concern. We can never take our health and our safety for granted. And we always need to consider, before we act, how our actions will affect everyone around us. We'll soon have a new city manager. This recruitment process is very different from that used for the prior manager. And while we want to get this done as soon as possible, we're not feeling the urgency that accompanied the previous selection process. To ensure citizen participation, one of the four interview committees is composed of citizen volunteers. And there will be a virtual reception for all city residents that I hope you all will attend. Written comments from all of these events will be given to the council when we meet for our final decision. In the meantime, the four final candidates under consideration have been announced. And I urge you all to do your research. 2021 will also bring us, barring complications, the long-awaited dredging of our city's water supply reservoir and the replacement of our main water transmission line from that reservoir. Staff have been working for the last two years on the preliminary surveys, environmental studies and reports, and other logistics associated with this project. We anticipate the actual dredging will begin in late spring or early summer this year. At that time, we need to have the water use agreement with McMinville Water and Light signed, as we will for at least four months, be depending on them for water while the work on our reservoir proceeds. And speaking of water, I've talked with hundreds of people around Carlton in the last couple of years, and no subject of concern comes up more often than our water base. This year, with the COVID relief restaurant rebate program, income from water billing is down, and we're going to be facing additional water costs incurred by buying McMinville water during the reservoir work. At this time, we don't know what those costs will be. Staff started work last year to figure out how we can deal with the losses and the cost increases without making life more difficult for all of us. But I warn you, and I'm not happy about having to say this, that we will be facing some price increase. But before we approve any increase, you will know exactly what and why, and it will be the absolute minimum. The city staff has already been working to provide a more precise and transparent explanation of our monthly water bills, and will be exploring ways to control those costs. We're grateful that with the help of State Senator Brian Bochus and State Representative Ron Noble, we have close to $10 million total in grants that will pay for the dredging and the replacement of the main water transmission line. This is one cost the city is not going to have to bear, but without that help, our water bills would be even worse. You're also likely to see stepped-up activity by the Oregon Department of Transportation as they prepare for the Highway 47 realignment, which will ultimately restore ownership of Main Street to our city. Many thanks to the citizens. Many thanks to the citizens who stepped up to volunteer for the ODOT realignment committee, which will work closely with ODOT to ensure that our citizens' concerns are heard and addressed as ODOT plans out the project. As a side note, this summer, you'll be seeing ODOT doing some ADA ramp work on Main Street. This is being done as part of a statewide project and bears no relation to the Highway 47 realignment. One of the less discussed but critically important activities in the next couple of years will be the work of our planning commission, who will be updating our development code, a project that has been needed for quite some time and which, had it already been in place, would likely have saved a considerable amount of heartburn over the JR Meadows 1 and JR Meadows 2 subdivision requests. The commission will also be tasked with creating development standards for 5G transmitters in anticipation of the increased use of that technology in the very near future. Their focus for all of this will be on ensuring that one of our ongoing city goals, livability, receives more attention. This is a vision that will drive future housing planning, parks and infrastructure, including sidewalks and streets, always with the goal of retaining the historic charm and warmth that has made Carlton the place we all call home. I'm happy to say that for the first time in several years, every seat on our planning commission is filled, and those commissioners all deserve a vote of thanks from all of us for stepping up. I also would like to take a minute to express my appreciation to our city's police department. Our police department doesn't have an easy job. And over the last 10 years, or 10 months, feels like 10 years, the COVID lockdowns and financial stress for our residents have made their jobs even harder. But we, as a community, don't care a lot about the increases here. In domestic and neighbor disputes can be attributed to the watchfulness of a department that keeps, that believes in keeping in touch with their citizens and trying to derail potential disputes before they evolve into situations where one or both parties finds themselves heading to jail. This year, we'll see the addition of a fourth officer, the first officer addition to our police department in more than 20 years. Make no mistake, Carlton is not made very, and while we don't see our city getting crime headlines, the potential is here. We decided many years ago that we wanted the focus of our police to be on preventative community policing, and the lack of those headlines is proof that that is what we are getting. Another project that's been hanging around and that requires some resolution is the question of a new city hall. Our current city hall doesn't meet seismic standards, and we're going to need improvements sooner rather than later. But until we determine what our economic position is going to be after the national economic fallout from the last year, we need to proceed with caution, if at all. And whatever we do, we need to make the need clear and make sure that all of you are actively involved from early stages onward, rather than being presented with a done deal. Last, I'm looking forward to finally getting the B-City program up and running. This is one of those projects that, like planning tourism and Carlton Business Association, will focus on encouraging volunteers and get us all thinking about what we collectively can do to bring our community closer together. We've got a big job ahead of us. And I'm reaching out to you now because I want you to be informed and prepared. We'll all need to step up to make these things happen despite the unknowns that we're dealing with. And I believe that as long as our priorities are to keep our community strong and our neighbors cared for, we'll be fine. My thanks to each of you. You are the reason Carlton is the great little town we live in. So please be kind to each other. That's what we almost need right now.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Watkins.
Okay. We'll move on to the appointments. Ceremonies, appointments and announcements. Letter B is our planning commission appointment. I have taken the liberty of adding James Fandy and Randy Robbins to our planning committee. And with those, the addition of those two individuals, we have a full planning commission. And I am so grateful and I'm so excited to watch you guys work. It's just a very special place in my heart because that's what keeps our city going. The other announcement, our appointment, and this is one I need to run by our city council, is the appointment of Jamie Eglin to our ad hoc committee for city manager. Do I have any comments or a motion on this nomination?
I move that we add Jamie Eglin to the ad hoc committee for, to appoint a city manager.
Second.
To hire a city manager, I'm going to point, sorry.
And we had a second?
Yeah, second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Extensions? Motion is passed, and thank you very much. Item number six. Item number six is the election of the council president. And so, council, this one is back to you. Is there a motion for a nominee for council president?
I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint Shirley Ward-Mullen as our council president. Appreciate her tenure and expertise, so I think that's a continuation we need to keep in place.
I'll second that.
Thank you. There's, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion, any?
If Shirley wants the job.
Yeah. I should, I just say that it's been a privilege to act in the capacity of council president for the past two years. Getting familiar with the staff and all of the projects and activities of the city and working closely with the mayor. And I'm looking forward to doing the same in the next two years and working with our new mayor, Linda Watkins.
All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Opposed? Extensions? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Manager. Okay, we are down now to citizen comments. I'm going to just kind of read from the explanation here. This is a section of the agenda which allows members of the public to address the city council on any item not otherwise included in the agenda. When invited by, okay, so that's what was going on. At this time, comments are typically limited to three minutes unless additional time is allowed by the mayor. Let's see about that. At this time, council may not directly respond to the citizen comments. If you would like a response or would like some reaction back to what you are commenting on, please make that clear to us. And we will, either council or staff, get back to you with, in response to your your query and your request. So are there any comments? Morgan, if you could watch for hands up, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you see?
All right. So for anybody who doesn't know, if you wish to make a comment and you've joined using a computer or mobile app, just just use the raise hand function so we can see who wishes to speak. If you're using a telephone, then you would hit star nine on the telephone keypad to use the raise hand function. And we do have a comment from James Bandi. I'm going to ask him.
Go ahead, James.
Looks like you're muted. Should send you a request to unmute.
Unmute?
There you are.
Okay, all right, I did it. And I should probably show myself, right? How do I do that? Oh, there it is, start video. Okay, here we go. So, thank you, thank you, council, thank you, mayor. I'm honored, and I'm going to put my hat on because I don't like to beat a ball guy. I'm honored to be part of the planning commission. I hope to do well for Carlton. I have fallen in love with this town, and I will continue to do everything I can to not only help it and nurture it, but to protect it and continue it being the greatest little town. Thank you.
And James, can you state your address for the record?
I am at 348 East Washington Street. It's very confusing on some maps, on some map apps, because it's very newly created. There are six houses here in a piece of property that used to be just a little piece of farmland and a barn, but created by Blake Zumwalt. Everybody knows who Zumwalt is here, I'm sure. It's the son of the guy who built all the houses in Mendel. Anyway, so I live in one of his little house, nice house, that, one of six. They're building this little block. And we're very close, I'm very close to the Flannure Wayner. And, and again, thank you. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Morgan, anyone else?
There are no other raised hands at this time.
Okay, so we will now close citizen comments. Moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any comments or questions about the consent agenda? Is there a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
For a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The consent agenda has been approved. Okay, we're down to ordinances. Number nine, ordinances, resolutions, discussion and action items. Letter A is the second reading of ordinance number 2027, the Recology franchise agreement. Walt, if you could take over for this portion, please.
Just to bring the new council members up to speed, this is a update of the 1984 solid waste franchise that the city has. It brings it into line with the Hebring cities ordinance, franchise ordinances that are currently in place with Recology, who is the solid waste provider for the city. It is substantially similar to the prior 1984 ordinance, however, it does contain automatic cost cost recovery provisions that allow the to assure that the garbage provider receives the amount of income needed to provide the service and the continuity of that service. In normal years, as long as the provider is within a range of revenue that meets that goal, then there is only a automatic increase in the franchise fee hauling rate that relates to cost of living, and that has been the case since 1984. I don't, I don't believe since that time there's been a year where a extraordinary increase was requested, other than for service changes or service enhancements that have been agreed upon between the service provider and the city council from time to time. Those discussions are ongoing with respect to, in Carlton, with respect to curbside recycling and so forth. But this is the, this ordinance has been read once by title only, I believe, last month. It, the city charter requires a second reading. It can be in full or it can be by title only, which is certainly much easier if the council so requests. The motion that would typically be made is a motion for the second reading of ordinance 2020-730 by title only.
Do I, do I hear a motion to approve the ordinance number 202730? By title only? Going once?
Go ahead, Kathy, you're going to do it.
Well, I actually had a question.
Yes.
I'm looking at page, page with the rate proposal for January 21, and it seems to be blank. Do we know what those rates are going to be yet?
I believe the council approved a rate increase for January, and that was a separate action and is not part of the franchise ordinance you're passing.
Page 19.
Yeah, at the current time, those, the rate schedule that gets placed there is the one that you approved at your council meeting, I believe, in November, November, December. Thursday, do you know which month that was approved?
I believe it was December.
So that is the schedule that goes into this ordinance, which is the current schedule that the council has approved for the rate that would go into effect, effective January of 2021.
I feel like for the benefit of our new counselors and just completing this document, we should probably have that inserted here. That would be my thoughts on this.
Well, it certainly will be inserted on the finalized version. It has been provided to the council previously. I don't, I think that's a reasonable request. You want the, if you want to defer that action until next month and so that the staff can provide a copy of that, that certainly, I don't see any huge problem with doing that.
Yeah, I would prefer to defer it till we have it completed and inserted here, so we can all see it again.
But Walt, that will, quick question, Walt. That won't affect, that won't affect this franchise agreement at all?
No, no, those rates have, those rates have already been approved for the, for to go into effect in January under the old ordinance. They will be incorporated into the new ordinance as a carryover section that, that has been proposed by, by the company.
So, I ask a question to Walt.
Yes, go ahead.
This, this new proposal here, does it, is it including glass and green waste, lawn debris, that kind of stuff?
It contains, well, it contains the opportunity for that. It does, this ordinance itself does not increase or change the current services being provided by the company in Carlton. If there's going to be a change, that would have to be presented to the council as to what those costs would be, and the council would need to approve that new fee, the fee structure to be provided for that new service. So this ordinance does not itself change the nature of the service that you're currently receiving.
Is that other, the service I'm asking about, has that been discussed at all?
Well, I know curbside recycling, including glass, has been discussed on more than one occasion before the council, and various council members have requested that discussion in the past, though the council has not approved of the increases that, that would be, that were discussed at that time. So, yes, there have been various discussions in the past about service changes, and the company, in my experience, has always been willing to come and make a proposal to the council as to what a new service would involve and what the cost would be, and the council would have to approve to get that off the ground.
Well, Shirley, if I can just insert here, Grant, we have in the past discussed also the yard debris removal as, as with the glass as well, but nothing was decided, so it's something that we have to take up in the future.
Okay, so I, yeah, that helped me out. I just wanted to know where, if anything had been done, or if it's on the, on the list to discuss in later times.
Yeah, I think they're both important to discuss.
And the council can take up that discussion whenever the council so chooses.
We just, it's, when was that, in November? It was November, December, I believe it was December. I think the first reading and the rates were came on the same agenda. And one of the things that we asked at that time was about green waste and, and glass recycling. And we never really got a clear explanation of when or how or how much it would, it would add to our bills or how our garbage bills would look, or when the company would be willing to start providing that service to Carlton. So, still seem to be trying to figure out what exactly the company is going to be offering us and when they're going to be offering it. Mayor Watkins, I believe after we get our ordinance in place, which will allow for those services, we would ask Recology to come back and present specifically on those services, probably first at a work session, so we can walk through the details and then in a more formal fashion. Okay. Does that, that clarifies a few things for me, too. Does that okay for you, Grant?
Yeah, that sounds good for me. I just wanted to, just to be clear on if it's something we've, that we still need to talk about or something that's already been done in prior council.
It's on, yeah, it's, it's not been forgotten. It's just been delayed a little bit. I'll add it to the future agenda so it has a placeholder. Thanks. Okay, are there, is there a motion to defer this until next month, or do we have any motion on this?
I'll make a motion to defer this until next month's agenda with additional items we've requested.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Aye. Sorry, guys. Okay, the motion is carried. And we will defer that approval of that ordinance until next, next month. Okay, resolution number 202307, appointing interim city manager as the budget officer for fiscal year 2021. Okay. Council is bringing this resolution, which reads required by ORS that you have to appoint the budget officer for the new budget coming forth for FY '22, so we are asking for a motion to approve this resolution to appoint the interim city manager. Are there any questions about this?
I move to approve resolution number 2020-307 to appoint interim city manager as a budget officer for fiscal year 2021.
I'll second that.
Thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. And that takes us to item C, resolution number 202306, extending workers' compensation to volunteers. Yes, mayor. So this comes before council every January. It's required by our insurance company. If you look at the resolution itself, it says whereas, whereas, as we travel throughout the years, then this just covers a workman's comp to our volunteers, counselors on site, our reserve officers, and it's mandated by our insurance to have this in resolution format. Do we have a motion?
A motion to adopt resolution 2021-306, workers' compensation insurance coverage to volunteers.
I second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? We have a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Item D, change of title only for our assistant city, to assistant city manager. Yes, mayor and council, this particular change of title is not a change in pay. It's not a change in job duties. It's a more transparent title to our community who were confused by the original title. And at the suggestion of council, we did have the attorney add a small portion to the job description. And in the memo, it reads, "It is not permitted to undertake or exercise supervision, authority, evaluation, discipline or control over the police chief. There is no change in pay and no other changes in the job description. It's just a clarification, transparent title for our community." Are there any comments or questions, any discussion on this?
Well, Shirley, I would just like to say that I believe that this title, assistant city manager, for default, very much so reflects the duties that Christie has performed in the last years and, and what she will in the future. And to add to that, because of the departure of our former city manager, Dennis Durham, Christie came in and assumed the role of interim city manager and has assumed that role seamlessly and shown exemplary leadership and has performed her duties just, you know, above and beyond, and for myself, working with her as council president. She has, you know, kept all of the balls in the air, communicated effectively, you know, worked with the staff, worked with the council, worked with our outside partners, and she has demonstrated, and we are very fortunate to have someone like Christie, who is there in the event for any reason, just as what happened with our former manager that left, that she stepped in and we were able to continue on seamlessly without a hitch. And so I think without a doubt that this title should be given to her.
Are there any other comments? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the change of job title, Kristy Martinez, assistant city manager.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass, abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you. And item E, Whenerberg Park play structure installation bid. So on this one, I'm speaking on behalf of Brian Burn, our public works director. He's asking that the council accept a quote by John Harris for $21,700 for the site preparation for the playground equipment that is going to be located down in Whenerberg Park. The quotes themselves were a little bit confused. The quotes themselves were a little bit confusing. So the high bidder, they all bid on the same things, just some are more descriptive. John Harris came in as low bid for this, but he's also done several projects in the city of Carlton and with his work ethic and his low bid. Brian is asking that you approve this. The site preparation is for the curb sidewalk around the playground, the ADA ramp from, they have to pay one parking place. It's going to be on the end of Whinneyburg Park. I'm terrible at direction.
I think that's the south end.
South end. And then they have to pay one for any wheelchair ramps. So this, the concrete is mandatory for the ADA, the ramp, and then the sidewalk to the park. There will not be chips in this park. It's actually a rubberized compound that will be laid in there so that even if it gets underwater, we won't have floating chips. As you know, we've had some extreme water this year. And so, and this is also being supplemented, not this construction park, but the purchase of that playground for our new counselors was by a $75,000 grant that we received from Game Time that helped us facilitate doing the Hong Creek Park, park playground equipment and the Whinneyburg Park. So a really nice addition for our children of the community. You have any questions?
I have a quick question. Just looking at Mr. Harris's quote, it just says, pricing was guaranteed 14 days from date of quote, and the date was December 5, 2020. How does that affect it, obviously, being outside of that date with the cost increase or anything like that that could happen?
John Harris will give us an extension on that quote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Additionally, I would ask that any motion to approve any of these contracts made subject to the execution of a personal services contract in standard form used by the city, that will include that number.
Thank you all.
Christie, what is the time of arrival for the actual equipment that he, that any of these contractors would need to get this completed by?
Um, we're gonna, we have the equipment already.
Oh, okay.
I met with Brian Burnham this morning and he said that we're waiting on some weather.
Sure.
We're going to do some completion. And as soon as that hits, then John Harris will have us on schedule. But we also have to time so the installation company bringing in the equipment actually sprays out this rubber compound. So they'll be coordinating. And I think you're going to probably look probably within the next 60 to 90 days, weather dependent of when that installation is going to occur.
Okay, thank you.
And by the way, I don't know if we discussed this before either, but I, I asked, and the old playground equipment, the old slime and swings that are still in Whinneyburg Park are grandfathered in and will not be removed. So those will still remain. Just for general information. Is there a motion? To accept this bid?
I move that we, that we accept the quote by John Harris, construction for $21,700 for the site preparation stipulated on execution of the personal services agreement, which also includes this quoted price of $21,700. Did I get that right, Walt?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
More discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. With that, Mayor Watkins, I think you made it through your first meeting and adjourned the motion, unless somebody's got something. Is there anything else? Anybody wants to add to the agenda? Okay, do I have a motion for, for adjournment?
I make a motion for adjournment tonight.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you, folks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi.